I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as Rodney Burris leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, as we come together and make decisions for the city, we ask for your wisdom, for your insight, and for clear minds and great decisions. We love you and praise your holy name. Amen?
Amen.
Roll call, please, Rodney.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Woodham.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Ms. Lively.
Here.
Ms. Yoon.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting, and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Chief, are there any this evening? I know there are, because I walked by them. Thank you, sir. Todd Rogers. Come on up to the table, please. Ready? We're here.
Okay, my name's Todd Rogers, and I own some property right next to where they're gonna put the solar farm. And I'd just like to make a few comments about why I would rather not see that happen. First off, we have a very good view of Allerton and all the farms across there. And it's important to me. I know it's not to anybody else, probably, but anyhow, those panels, from everything I've seen, from all around the neighboring counties, they do not mow them after a while. And the upkeep on them, even though the lady says they're gonna do a fine job of mowing and everything, and put pollinators in there, well, that's temporary, because there's plenty of weed seed out there. The weeds get to growing, and they do not take care of them. And I don't want to see that there either. And one of the other things is the noise. It was mentioned on the internet that they're quite noisy. It was not addressed by the lady that spoke about them before. But I don't think they have them up against residential like this is gonna be. If you look at Bonneville, or down at Orianna, or over by Forsyth, you will not find a solar farm that's this close to residential. Most of them are way away from it. In fact, all of them that I can find, and I can't find one mentioned on the internet that's like Monticello, in the city limits. There's nothing like that out there that I can see, which doesn't make it necessarily wrong, but it's just not something you see. And the fact that it's up against, it's 224 feet from my bedroom window to my property line. They are talking 50 foot after that. This is not even 300 feet from where I sleep and where I spend most of my time. They claim that the low magnetism doesn't hurt anything. I understand, maybe, I don't know if I believe that or not, because there's other people say differently, that they like to see it a mile away, even, as much as that or more. And I do remember when they had power lines were talked about, and especially young children, and how being exposed to this all the time could have an effect on them. Well, why is this any different? Okay, one of the, see. It was also mentioned that maybe our governor would sue you guys if you didn't pass this. I don't know if this is true or not. But even our governor surely wouldn't think that a town this size should have a solar farm in the city limits and up against residential just because he wants to have solar farms. I wouldn't think. But there again, I don't know. And then I don't know, also, I know Suzanne Wells wants it for the money end of it. I guess I can understand that. But she's also got cash rent if this doesn't go through. I don't know what, why the city wants this, if they do. But maybe it's tax dollars, I'm not sure about that. And I also heard there's a petition going around that says that we're gonna get a 10% or more decrease in our power bills if this goes through. Well, I don't know, mine doubled here in the last couple of three months. I can't believe we're gonna get any discount from that solar farm in Monticello. But there again, I can't prove that. I think that's pretty much. Oh, I did want to mention, any of you board members would have this solar farm going down the entire side of one of your property. I can't believe you wouldn't feel the way I do. I mean, my whole west side of my property, and my property is oblong. I mean, it's longer than it is wide. It's gonna be this, these things. I don't really know a whole lot about them, but I know they're not beautiful to look at. And I do believe they're gonna make some noise. I didn't even realize for a while, but they tilt, but they say they're not gonna
Yeah.
do any shining.
It's done.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amen. John Shinholzer.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me here. My name's John Shinholzer. I'm a advocacy director for American Veterans for Kratom Safe. And I'm also a United States Marine Corps veteran. I served four years in the infantry, deployed three times. I was a paint contractor, wallpaper hanger for 30 years. In the last 20 years, I developed, me and my wife, were founders of Virginia's leading authentic peer recovery community center. It turned out to be a national model. It's mirrored all across America. And in August 1982, I got sober in the Marine Corps. So I celebrated 43 years in recovery this past August. So got a lot of experience with addiction and recovery and chronic pain and whatnot. But about 12 years ago, 14 years ago, in our recovery center, we noticed kratom popping up on our drug test. I didn't know anything about it. Long story short, I've actually studied it for the last 12 years. I have some of the 600 scientific studies with me tonight. They're summaries, over 100 peer reviewed. But 12, 14 years ago, the kratom we saw then is not the kratom you got today. Well, you know, you guys gonna, you got a bill on the table. I think it's really important, and I'm supporting the bill 100%. I just got one little exception there. Natural kratom leaf products, the genuine tea and the natural products, you know, I see that as a win, you know, not only for the 50 million Americans that are underserved with the chronic pain, but in the addiction world. We noticed a lot of addicts were pivoting from the one pill kills to a leaf product, and it solved their problems. And a lot of alcoholics and meth addicts and crack addicts and prescription addicts, they have a tendency to pivot to the natural leaf kratom products. And to put it in comparison to what I'm supporting, you wanting to ban those 70H products, the adulterated products, the sensitized products, it's like a near beer compared to a fifth of 200 proof alcohol. The disparity is incredible. And to ban kratom products and natural leaf products, what that does, it cuts off a lifeline. For a lot of people, you don't even know are consuming it. And, you know, two years ago, I participated in John Hopkins Human Clinical Trials. You know, I was curious about this product of my pain situation. I'm only one of my family out of 10 that doesn't have one or more, you know, hip and joint replacements. I got that bad gene there. But, you know, I took a gram four times a day for nine months. It took away all my pain. It, you know, gave me higher energy and good focus. And then I went cold turkey overnight with John Hopkins. And I really didn't have any detox problems or any problems not taking it, you know, for the next 60 days. You know, the first couple nights, I didn't sleep good, but other than that, it was fine. Now, like I said, for me to stop taking a gram, when the abuse that people are doing, it's like equivalent to 200, 300 grams a day, you know. So like I'm saying, the 70H products, the adulterated products, the sensitized product, they're terrible. I don't want them in my community. I'm getting them out of my community. Virginia passed the Kratom Consumer Protection Act, so we don't have quite as bad a problem you got here. And so I'm just, I'm asking you, the city council, to maybe have an amendment with the bill you want to pass, the, whatever you call it, the regulation, resolution, and just, you know, exempt natural kratom products, because they are safe. The FDA knows they're safe. They would have banned them in 2016, but they couldn't, because they passed in 1994 the Shea Act, which meant they could pass the eight factor analysis test. And the products I'm talking about use FDA GMP regulatory packaging processes. So they got the proper label, the warnings, and there's a way to do that, because many communities and many states aren't doing that as we speak. And you got a bill coming up at your Capitol, and they're working through a process, how to regulate it. Regulation is the key here, instead of just an outright ban. And should you have further discussion when you get to that? I'll hang out in case a question might come up, because, you know, are you looking for a solution to a workaround? But I'm just asking y'all to give pause to just outright banning the natural kratom products. But you're actually wanting to ban the bad ones. That's the simple, short discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any questions? All right, thank you. Left you a, this is the mayor's package.
Can you just leave it right there?
Sure.
Jennifer Johns.
Hello. Jennifer Johns, I own Simply JJ on the square.
I am Tim Hekt, own bracket company.
So both of us are located in what he calls the West Washington corridor, where we have full up of businesses, which is great. But an issue that has kind of become something lately is there's nowhere for us to unload product. And I got, like, today, for instance, FedEx brought nine boxes. It was a Monday, it's not busy up there, it's not a big deal. But on like a Thursday or a Friday, when they're bringing a lot of shipments, and it's not just me, I mean, he gets orders. Kayla McConkey is now there with KJ and Co. There's nowhere for people, like the trucks, to park safely. So they're looping around the block repeatedly. So I'm just wondering about the possibility of a loading zone that would serve like our block, really the block that goes like with the Three Ravens, it could go, you know, like, it could fit a lot of people, basically. So my idea is, right in front of my store, there's one parking place, and FedEx actually pulled up into that spot. And I got pictures of it, and I failed to bring them. But that would show, like, basically, it would give them the space to pull safely. They're not blocking cars in, they're not blocking the roads that people can't get through, because it's a problem. And I know they're frustrated, because they have to go around and around and around in order to find some place to kind of just pull over most days. So not only that, but we also bring, I know Kayla brings items from her home. She's having shipments brought there. I have stuff delivered to my house if I'm not gonna be at the shop to get them. So for our purposes, to be able to have somewhere safely to pull, because right now I'm pulling like in the crosswalk, and it's, you know, it's not safe. So I just, I don't know what the protocol is as far as like to have that considered as a possibility just for delivery purposes.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Yeah?
On a similar note, just in terms of the parking, I'm wondering if there's a possibility of somehow doing a validation for people? Is a two-hour parking restriction on the square and every block, you know, leading off, which I understand why that's in effect. But we have, probably 70% of our business is people from out of town. So if somebody's coming from out of town and is having, for example, a hair appointment on our block, and then going to lunch and then shopping, that's not a two-hour project. And so we've had people that have received tickets, have walked into the stores, understandably upset. They're visiting from surrounding communities, supporting our businesses, and, you know, they get a parking ticket. So I understand why that's in effect. I was wondering if there's a way of doing a validation, where if they have been in your business, and it extends that somehow they could leave a ticket with one of the shop owners or business owners, and we could then somehow stamp that or put some kind of thing in there where we could potentially take it off their hands and say, we'll take care of that, and then get that to the person at hand. But, you know, we've got three salons on the street. I don't have my hair done, clearly. But I think those processes take sometimes a while, hour and a half, and then if you want to shop and eat. And also, people like will come into a store and pick up something and put it in their car, and then continue shopping. And yes, they can potentially park two or three blocks off the square. But that's not as convenient as parking on the square. So I'm just asking if there's a possibility of doing some kind of validation so we're not upsetting our patrons. Again, well over half of our customers are out-of-town people. So they're making a trek, whether it be from Bloomington, Arthur, wherever, Tuscaloosa, to shop and support our businesses. And if that happens, it's not the best PR for our town and business to hand them a $10 parking ticket for supporting our businesses. So I'm not sure who that goes to. We'd be happy to kind of organize it from our end if there's a person that's kind of in charge of that.
Okay, thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Okay, Mike?
Yes, Mike Tesano? Yeah, this is him speaking. I'll share my camera if you want me to. Sorry. So I've been a kratom consumer for 15 years. I only drink the natural, mainly, just the regular tea. I'm a healthy young man. I use it, helps me with my chronic insomnia. It helps me with my joint pains. I'm gonna be turning 40 tomorrow. So I wanted to share my experience with it. My blow works great, I'm healthy mentally, physically. And I agree with the others, like John. And I do support regulation and age restriction. And I really, really would like the state of Illinois to pass the Kratom Consumer Protection Act. I think there's several bills that are currently in legislation. I think those are solid bills. And I'm really, you know, anxious and really would like to see legislation passed for that and, you know, something within the villages, if possible. I don't have much knowledge, experience about the science or regulation and whatnot, but I want to share my experience as a personal testimony consumer that it's really helped me with my insomnia for a very long time. And like I said before, I'm healthy and I'm very grateful for it. And I'm, thank you for this opportunity to let me speak.
Thank you very much. Melody?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I am an 11-year daily kratom consumer, and I take it for pain relief. I used to be using a walker and even a wheelchair at times, like around events like the zoo and so forth. But kratom, I've got my mobility back. I'm still in pain right now, but it's manageable. And back in July 28th, I believe it was 28th, HHS and the FDA, they asked me, an 11-year daily consumer, to talk about its benefits, not its adverse effects, but its benefits. And they wanted me to distinguish it, that what's helping me is kratom, and 70H is not kratom. And so I would just like you to take that into consideration tonight. There are, like John said, 50 million underserved chronic pain patients, and I'm one of them. And thankfully, because of kratom, I was able to provide my family in 2022 for a full year of childcare, because my daughter's childcare facility closed down two weeks before she went off maternity leave. So I was able to save a young family $50,000. And in today's economy, that's a lot of money. I just did the same thing again this summer. I provided childcare for my three-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter. I spent the days at Splash Pads, actually rolling down hills with her and swinging. And without kratom, I wouldn't hardly know my granddaughter. I would be bedridden. So I'm just asking you to take that into consideration. Get rid of the 70H. The FDA and HHS have been very clear. They are not targeting it. And if they were, would they ask an 11-year daily consumer to come up on their platform at a national press briefing and talk about the benefit? So I'd just like you to target the 70H and leave unadulterated products available for consumers like myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Misty Brown?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Misty Brown, and I am a kratom consumer advocate and activist from Colorado. I would like to read y'all my testimony. I was addicted to FDA-approved pain pills, benzos, and muscle relaxers for 11 years straight via chronic pain management for my degenerative disc disease from 2008 to 2019. I got fired from chronic pain management April 2019 because I didn't show up for a per-contract pill count. I was 11 pills short, and my drug dealers didn't have any pink oxytins. After that, I went to the streets and I started doing cocaine while I was searching for a new pain management doctor. In June of 2019, while in cocaine withdrawal, I watched that documentary, A Leaf of Faith. My journey with whole-leaf kratom began the very next day. Whole-leaf kratom shut that "I need one more snort, one more pill, one more escape noise" off in my brain. It allowed me to work on my whys of addiction. I have not been back to pain management over six and a half years. I'm a functioning member of society again. I'm a thriving mother again. I pay taxes again. I am no longer a burden to my kids, and I'm now a first-time grandma. I will be forever grateful and thankful that I accidentally found lab-tested whole-leaf kratom powder. You guys have to know how to differentiate between synthetic 70H and whole-leaf kratom. So I mirror what John and Melody and Mike say. You know, regulation, we need regulation. You know, do what you wish with the synthetic 70H products, but don't lump that into the natural kratom leaf. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Allison Smith? Can't hear you. Are you muted?
Hey, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor Stoner and members of the council. My name is Allison Smith, and I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Global Kratom Coalition. We are an alliance of consumers, scientific experts, and industry leaders who seek to enact regulation so that ensure consumers have access to safe and regulated natural kratom products. Our mission is to advance scientific research, engage consumer education, and serve as a resource for stakeholders and decision-makers in legislative and regulatory matters. The GKC respectfully opposes ordinance 2025-67 as it is drafted because of its blanket ban on all kratom, including natural leaf. Natural kratom leaf is a botanical substance from Southeast Asia with centuries of safe traditional use. That's grown in popularity in the recent years. Today, there are approximately 23 million people in the United States reporting consumption of natural kratom leaf for its functional benefits. With at least 50 years of use in the United States, there are decades of science supporting its safe use, including an FDA single ascending dose clinical trial, which demonstrated that natural kratom leaf is highly tolerable in humans, even at high servings. And this is why we oppose the outright ban on natural kratom leaf. Instead, we recommend taking the same approach as the FDA. For those who may not be aware, on July 29th of 2025, the HHS, the FDA, and the DEA announced a coordinated federal action to schedule concentrated synthetic 70H, Schedule 1 controlled substance. Context, 70H is an oxidative byproduct found in trace amounts in dried kratom leaf. However, concentrated 70H is synthetically enhanced and are 100 times more potent than natural kratom leaf and are 13 times more potent than morphine. Crucially, the FDA made it very clear that their recommendation only applies to products containing concentrated and unnatural levels of 70H, not products that contain natural kratom leaf. And since making that announcement, at the FDA Commissioner, Dr. Marty McCary, has made clear in numerous interviews and press conferences that the federal government is not targeting natural kratom leaf, and their concern lies with the concentrated synthetic 70H products. Further evidence of this distinction at the state level is the FDA Commissioner and the Attorney General of Florida announced recently that Florida would be adding concentrated synthetic 70H to its Controlled Substances Act by using an emergency rulemaking. And again, in that situation, it was made clear that natural leaf kratom would not be included in the scheduling. So we come to you to suggest that rather than a blanket ban on natural kratom products, a more appropriate method would be to follow the FDA's lead and enact a prohibition against concentrated synthetic 70H while simultaneously enacting common sense regulations, such as age requirements on kratom leaf products. There's a plethora of evidence on the safety of natural leaf products. It's the concentrated synthetic 70H that is known to be dangerous and should be the focus of this ban. I thank you all for your concern for the residents of Monticello, and I welcome the opportunity to bring any additional scientific studies, factual reports, and kratom experts to your attention in order to aid in the decision-making. We, the GKC, we look forward to serving as a resource in the near and long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Gillis? We can't hear you, you're muted. Yes, I may be. Nope. I have the same issues, don't worry about it. Nope. There you go. No. Now. Press the volume button. Try turning the volume up. Your picture of a microphone there somewhere that has a line through it. Call in. Wish I could help you.
Okay, so she's gonna go out and come back.
She's gonna go out and come back, okay. Just chat, it's okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Oh, there we go.
Oh, thank goodness. I'm so glad that I apologize. I'm so sorry. Technology hates me sometimes. Thank you so much for your patience. I do appreciate it. My name is Jennifer Gillis, and I have been a kratom consumer and advocate for the past six years. And I just want to share a little bit of my story on the impact that kratom's had on my life. 19 years ago, I was diagnosed with transverse myelitis, and this came not only with a lot of physical limitations, but I also became a lifelong chronic pain patient. For 13 years, I utilized various pain management options, including prescription medications, to help me be able to function in life. But due to circumstances like DEA cutbacks and ever-changing regulations, I was eventually unable to get my pain medications that I relied upon for so long. In May of 2019, I found whole-leaf kratom, and I had been a responsible kratom consumer for the last six years. I can get out of bed, run errands, attend school functions, and I just feel like I live somewhat of a normal life, even though I still have physical limitations. I know there are a lot of others like me who have a similar story, and kratom is just a lifeline for people like me. I do absolutely support regulations like age requirements, lab testing, labeling. Additionally, I'd like to see more education on the difference between natural whole-leaf kratom versus the semi-synthetic 70H products that are being marketed as kratom out in the market now. It is good to see the FDA has kind of stepped in and is not only trying to educate the public, but, you know, warn about the risks of the 70H products. I'm glad that they've also made the distinction and that their concern is not with the whole-leaf kratom. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and thank you for being patient with me.
Thank you very much. Steve Schrepper.
Good evening. Until this morning, I'd never heard of kratom before, so I'm not aware that we've got a real problem in Monticello and especially one that needs to be acted on without good due diligence before. I know it's never been discussed at an open city council meeting before, so I would caution you to proceed with wisdom on this. The... I would like to bring to the city council's attention the debates and the result of the solar farm that was proposed at the middle school. Sounds to me like the current proposal is very similar in its close proximity to residential properties. And I was a little bit dismayed at the zoning planning commission in that they were not interested in gathering information. As you know, they're an advisory body that you count on to take the testimony, examine witnesses, and evaluate information when they go to make their recommendation to you. And in this case, the chairman was very clear that he wasn't interested in learning anything more about the information that was being presented. And that seemed nearsighted to me. And I commented on that. I don't know if it's in there minutes or not. But I would... Both of these things, I would consider. None of them are emergencies that you need to move on before you are fully informed so where you can make good, informed decisions. And I guess that's all I had to say. Just, it seems like these things are getting fast-tracked through, and I'm not aware that we have a situation in Monticello with either one of these that has to be done without due diligence and prudence in your decision-making. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Romney.
Okay, I think I'm coming on. There we go.
Can hear you.
Great, oh, that's good news. Hey, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going between computer and phone because my computer wouldn't let me. So I won't be looking at you as I read my testimony, but I'm grateful to be able to talk to you tonight. My name is Laura Romney, and I'm a patient with trigeminal neuralgia. It's a facial nerve disease that's often nicknamed the suicide disease because of the intensity of pain that it causes. And I've had this for over 13 years. It's like an ice cream headache that just never goes away. And it's one of the most painful conditions to live with. And about eight years ago or so, I was in a desperate situation. I had tried everything, over 30 pharmaceuticals. I'd had all the procedures. I even had brain surgery, and I had a stimulator implanted in my face. And I was at a desperation point. And I started looking for alternative solutions because, as you know, in today's society, it's near impossible to get an opioid prescription. The one I was given was very inadequate, and I only was allowed a few hours of pain control per day. So again, I was just at desperation point when I had heard about kratom and tried it and honestly could not believe. Within about 20 minutes, my pain had dropped from a seven-to-nine level down to about a two-to-four level. And here I am, almost nine years later, and I consume kratom every day, and it truly has changed my life. It is an absolute viable solution to the opioid epidemic. And paid patients like me really do need pain control options, especially with the whole opioid crackdown that's been going on. There are patients out there that are being forced to the streets because they literally have no pain control options. And, you know, you hear people say kratom saved my life. Well, in my case, it did, and many, many others. I know it does as well. I don't crave kratom. All I crave is the, you know, the reduction in pain that it gives me. And really, pain patients are really a silent minority in this country. We don't have a lot of voices, and a lot of times, we're, you know, hid behind our closed doors because we don't have those pain control options. And honestly, today, it was a staggering thing. I'm on a Facebook group called Fentanyl, something about fentanyl deaths. And today, I looked, and there are over 37,000 members on that group. And most of them are parents who have lost their children to fentanyl overdoses. And so, as you know, the drug culture is a huge problem in our society. And, you know, you start taking away more and more options for people, especially harm reduction options, and people end up going to, you know, other options, which a lot of times can include fentanyl, which, as you know, is deadly. Whereas kratom is very different. It is a partial opioid... It works on your opioid receptors partially so that it does not suppress your breathing. That is very unlike the 70H synthetic products, which I absolutely do not support. Those do need to be taken away from your community. I am one of the people that is in the team, that's the educating team. I know you've been offered the chance to be able to take advantage of that. I highly recommend it just because you will learn so much. I know most of the legislators we speak to don't really understand a lot about kratom. They have not had the time or the ability to learn about the actual science behind it and also how you can responsibly regulate in your community. So, you know, we really support the Kratom Consumer Protection Act, which is basically, you know, it talks about age restrictions. It ensures that everything that is sold in your community has great GMP standards so that, you know, everything you know you're taking is safe. You're not ingesting salmonella and things like that. And, you know, again, most importantly, to regulate the synthetics away so that you're not able to, you know, have those really, truly addictive products on the shelves, which is what a lot of these bad side effects that are being reported are from. So again, I just encourage you to follow the advice of the FDA and the Health and Human Services. They're saying ban the synthetic products and leave the natural kratom products alone so people like myself and several of the others tonight who have spoken can, you know, can have access to those products. And again, I highly suggest you reach out to us and, you know, take that education and please regulate responsibly because that's the answer. Thank you again for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael.
There's another lady on line.
I just, I just forgot you. Come on. I didn't do it on purpose. I can't reiterate.
Well... Well, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I was hoping you would not forget me. And I will be brief, but thank you so much, Mayor Stoner and the city council for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Dr. Heidi Sakura. I'm a retired nurse practitioner and healthcare executive. I'm from Wakanda, Illinois. During my career, I prescribed and developed quality programs for the most vulnerable patients, including those with brain injuries, frail elderly, and cancer patients. Evaluating and applying evidence-based research to improve outcomes was my specialty. Unfortunately, my career was cut short due to multiple rare congenital painful disorders. Everything in the pharmaceutical toolkit that I was so familiar with led to adverse reactions for me. And I understand that a lot of chronic patients with rare disorders have the same issue. There are not many safe options for treatment of severe chronic pain. My life was limited until I found kratom. Natural kratom is not intoxicating. It helps my balance and my driving. For the past seven years, it has allowed me to enjoy my family, especially our three grandchildren, and serve others through volunteering. But I became a kratom advocate when a close veteran friend tried it for his severe back pain and PTSD from serving our country in the Gulf War. The results were amazing, causing his son to look up at me and say, "Thank you for giving us our daddy back." That is the power of the natural leaf kratom to heal individuals and families. I have witnessed firsthand the amazing benefits for many others suffering with chronic pain, anxiety, PTSD, opioid addiction, and rare neuromusculoskeletal disorders. There is an abundance of scientific evidence for the efficacy and safety of the natural kratom leaf. And as John Shinholzer said, he's got over 500 studies. And there's, and I think Allison mentioned the ascending dose study that the FDA completed as well. Unfortunately, there are products that have proliferated the market that take that trace. But most potent metabolite of the natural plant, chemically synthesize it, concentrate it, and put it in a pill called 7-hydroxymetrogenine, or 70H. This is not kratom, but has been marketed as kratom. So this is what the FDA Commissioner, Dr. McCary, called for a ban on these 70H products. But he made it very clear when he said, "We are not targeting the natural kratom leaf or ground-up powder. We are targeting the concentrated synthetic byproduct that is an opioid." So I'm a strong proponent, like everybody else. You've heard of common sense regulation called the Kratom Consumer Protection Act that has been passed in 18 states. And many communities have passed a similar ordinance as well. This regulation ensures safe kratom leaf products are available to those 21 and older, prevents adulteration and concentration with batch lab testing, requires proper preparation using GMP and labeling according to FDA standards. What I ask you to do is a critical analysis of this issue by asking a few questions. First, have you had any negative reports? And if you have, making sure that the evidence includes a collection and analysis of the actual products reported to have caused harm. You will likely find these are not kratom products. Also, for any reported harms, full toxicology reports, including other substances contributing to overdose, because the reports of any kind of kratom-alone problem are exceedingly rare, as the FDA has already said. And then the actual number of those claiming harm. Finally, I hope that you will consider the evidence-based education that I offered in my email that I sent to you last week. Many communities have benefited from this education, and no one has ever been harmed by learning more. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and I am glad to answer any questions, and I truly appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Michael Beam.
Thank you. First, I want to say that I appreciate everybody's testimonies on the safe use of kratom, the natural product. What is being sold in Monticello is not the natural product. It is the synthetic product. And I don't believe our ordinance outlaws the use of kratom. It outlaws the sale of kratom and kratom products within the city limits of Monticello. I could be wrong, but that's just my understanding. I'm not comfortable being reactionary in any part of my life. I never have been. I've always tried to be proactive, other than housework. Don't ask my wife about that. But we have gone through several meetings up to, including tonight, to talk about this, and it's not something that has been just brought up recently and just thrown up here just to try to get something done. Kratom may not be illegal here in Illinois, right? But it is in Wisconsin. It's illegal in Indiana, Alabama, Arkansas, Rhode Island, Louisiana, Vermont, 33 different counties and cities in Mississippi, the entire county of Sarasota in Florida. There are other cities as well, San Diego, Denver, here in Illinois, in Jerseyville, in Kankakee, in Alton, in Godfrey, a bunch of cities up north and a few south of us. Whether they're making all kratom products illegal or just the synthetics, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that. But the DEA has listed kratom as a drug of chemical concern. They even have issued warnings against it. Despite what we've heard this evening, in 2016, for a few months, kratom was listed as a Schedule I drug. And then folks brought some information forward that apparently changed minds and moved things into a different direction. I brought this up to the county government as well a few months ago, and I continue to try to move this forward at a county level. few months ago, and I continue to, to try to move this forward at a county level. Um, I do understand, um, that it's not sold anywhere else in Piatt County, other than here in the city of Monticello. And what's being sold, again, are the synthetics. Um, I know that one of the locations that is, that is selling the stuff told me, um, they are selling a minimum of a thousand dollars a week of this stuff. They also know that they have people that are likely abusing it. There's people that will come in and buy three days' worth every day. Um, the dangers of addiction to this are real. There are psychological and physiological dependencies to this drug. Um, perhaps not what the other folks have been kind enough to speak with us about, but for what's being sold here in town, there is. Um, and stopping people from being able to buy it here in Monticello won't stop it from being in Monticello, right? Don't make that mistake. We obviously know that, right? It's illegal to sell crystal meth, but it still shows up in Piatt County from time to time, right? People will be able to get it somewhere. Um, but the other part of this ordinance that, that needs to be considered is, um, the, the very dangerous Delta eight, Delta nine, and Delta ten variants, the canniboids. Um, Delta nine is already federally illegal, right? You, you can't get that anywhere. Um, eight and ten were originally illegal as well, but then they got snuck in under a twenty eighteen farm bill. Um, these mostly man-made cannibal, cannibals, cannibals, cannabis items are generally marked and sold as gummies, candies, oils, that kind of thing, right? Toxic to children. A, a study done back in twenty twenty-two by the Journal of Medical Toxicology found that exposure by kids under eighteen increased eighty percent from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Thirty-three percent of those kids exposed were under the age of six. They see candy, they see gummies, they eat them, they get sick. Fifty-eight percent of all of those exposures were critical care admissions. Um, I would guess that since twenty twenty-three, those things have only increased, just because of the prevalence of this kind of thing in our society now. I, uh, I, I do truly appreciate the information that, that the other folks have shared. And I do understand how it helps, um, in, in the, the very specific situations. My question would be, if it is that helpful, why can you not get a prescription for it? Right? People can get prescriptions for medical marijuana. Why not kratom? And then the second part of this, again, I will remind you, is not making it illegal to use kratom. It's just simply making it illegal to sell within the city limits of a five thousand person town in a sixteen thousand person county in central Illinois.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That is. Sneak it anymore?
No.
Now we'll move to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated September nine, twenty twenty-five through September twenty-second, twenty-five.
So.
Not yet.
Oh.
Budget report, August twenty twenty-five. Is there a, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I think you did, right? Is there a second?
Second.
And answer questions before we vote. Harrington, seeing them, I have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed. Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively. Ms. Yoon.
Yes.
Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Broder.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report, business news. After a short time closing for an interior remodel, Sage Nutrition will be opening under new management this fall. This fall. Willow Tree Missions has opened the Willow Tree Christmas Market at one oh nine South State Street, the former Maxwell's Discount location. The store will be open Wednesdays through Saturdays, nine to five P M, starting October first through December the twenty-third. Upcoming events, the Monticello Garage Sales are this Thursday through Sunday. Register your sale or see the final list on the Chamber website by Wednesday. The last weekend for the Monticello Railway Museum four oh one in steam is October fourth and fifth. The Fall Oktoberfest will be in downtown Sunday, October fifth, from twelve to four P M, on Main and Charter Streets. There will be many participating downtown shops and restaurants, as well as outdoor vendors, hay rack ride, and food trucks. And finally, but not, last but not least, the Monticello Fire and Wet Rescue Department Annual Open House is Saturday, October eleventh, from twelve P M through three, through three P M at the fire station. Moving on to new business, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five, sixty-five, an ordinance amending the zoning map at twelve fifteen Raymond Road City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this ordinance and the next resolution are tied together. Uh, they're two separate action items, but the zoning map amendment is this and then the following thing with the issue. Right? But it's the same thing. So, um, I'm gonna read this, uh, in the way that it was presented at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. So there's gonna be, all the comments are gonna be talked about, and then I'm gonna go into what the responses are, okay? And, and there was, there was quite a bit of information for me to put out, so I'm just gonna get into it. If I go too fast or you don't hear it repeated, just let me know, okay? So the applicant owner and applicant, the South, uh, Monticello Solar One LLC are seeking a rezoning to Industrial One, or General Industrial, on a parcel currently zoned B business, and a conditional use permit not otherwise designated at a property commonly known as twelve fifteen Raymond Road, um, which is next to the jail and behind the houses on Market Street, off at the end of Raymond Road. Um, the parcel was previously zoned industrial. Also, the city Monticello Code of Ordinances, section one fifty-three dot zero one seven A allows such a structure once a conditional use permit is issued. A public hearing was held at the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Monticello Planning and Zoning Board on Monday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. And again, at, uh, last zoning, last, last week, Monday, excuse me, the September fifteenth. Lindsey McIntyre, the developer, with sole source power, along with applicant Susan Wells, were present for questions. Uh, City Clerk Robin Throneberg read the following letter, and, and this is the, the letter. They said they're gonna plant pollinators among the solar panels, and that would be fine, except all the weed seed out there. It will rain a few times, and all that will be there as weeds. The mowings mentioned are a joke. Those weeds will not be mowed very often to look decent. I was wondering if the city limits ordinance applies if it is rezoned. The noise was mentioned often on the internet, and I don't remember that being brought up at the first meeting. They say times, they say at times it is very annoying, so it'd be interested to know how loud they're going to be. The question of how, for, how far is safe and healthy from panels varies. One point eight six to one point two miles are the longer ones, whilst one thousand six hundred forty feet is mentioned, too. The solar farms I've seen are well away from the residential areas. I believe this is for a reason. My bedroom is two hundred twenty-four feet from the property line, and I would not want a hundred yards from the panels. They say this is low-level magnetism, is not harmful, but a few years ago, magnetism from large overhead lines was deemed harmful with long-term exposure. I think rather to be safe than sorry. I told the city, I was told the city has to pass this or risk being sued by our governor. I don't know if this is true, but even our sorry excuse for a governor can't believe a town Monticello size needs a big solar farm in the city limits. I haven't found another town this size with a solar farm in the city limits, and I don't think I will. There are large cities and colleges that have panels in the limits, like the U of I, but they're not up against residential area. Money is the common denominator here, as usual. Rent money and tax dollars and the collateral damage doesn't seem to matter. I believe if this was happening to any of the board members here, you'd feel the way I do. My neighbor and myself are pushing, are, are being pushed out of the way so that certain people can make more money. I heard there is a petition going around saying this will be benefit, benefit the local community. Wind and solar are part of the green movement and known for being the highest-priced way to produce energy. The, the one that's going to benefit the most from this petition is the one holding it. My lawyer will be looking into this and hopefully will find something to fight with. I certainly think this is a conflict of interest, at the very least. Signed, Todd Rogers and Marsha Harrington. Then Mark Rowe was concerned, this is additional comments. The solar panels will be twenty feet tall and rotate to follow the sun, which would, which would cast glare onto the backyard of their property. They were asking what assurances we will have that the glare from the solar panels would not impact his parents' property. Justin Davis with J P Kratts and Company had the following questions. They're wanting to remove the trees on the south side of the property. I just want to make sure they're not wanting to remove trees from our property line due to water and wind erosion purposes, along with the flooding issues. Scott McFarland owns the property next to the proposed site and is a senior trustee for Mid-Pire Fire District, and he made the following statements. Mid-Pire Fire Protection District, last board meeting voted in opposition of the project. Mid-Pire currently runs sixty percent of the city's fire calls due to staffing issues. Mid-Pire Fire will be the first two engines and guaranteed due to the fire station being on Raymond Road. Mid-Pire Fire is already overwhelmed with helping other jurisdictions along the wind farm in D-land without adding to it. There is usually, on average, one to two fires in that area already due, due to the railroad tracks and the trains using their brakes. If weeds get too high, we will not be able to stop the fire, so it will be a complete loss of the solar farm. Taking good quality farm grown out of production and not being able to put it back into production. Construction requires land clearing, which is compaction, changes in drainage channels, increased runoff and erosion. Excuse me. It affects invasive species ecosystems along with water and soil contamination. Planting native prairie mix for pollinators, you do not mow them. Two to three times a year, you mow them once, and then you control it in a fire, control it with fire by fall, which helps seed spreading. Comparable solar farms are pretty barren due to compaction that basically turn the whole land into concrete, which make it difficult for seeds to properly propagate and grow. Solar Farms Engineering Study Map, Topographic Maps, show the water runoff coming straight to the front door of my building. So they are wanting to put rock pad nine, put nine feet, eight inches above my concrete floor. There are other buildings in the same area that have water issues every time it rains. Lawrence Berkeley National Labatory Study found that there was a one point five increase in property values based on a twenty twenty-three story study. Loyalty University found, I said decrease, I, I hope I didn't say increase. I, I meant decrease. Study found houses within a half mile depreciate two point five to eight point nine. Following construction of a solar particularly roar is Louisiana State Center for Energy Studies found one point five to six point nine decrease in property values from a raise within point six miles. State legislation, new guidelines in, in effect, Article one fifty-three dot zero three five Stormwater Management states all new construction, and significant increases impermeable, impermeable surfaces shall provide adequate onsite stormwater detention and stormwater drainage facilities. All drainage systems designed and constructed shall comply with provisions of Chapter fifty-two Stormwater Management, where stormwater regulations within a municipal code conflict the most stringent of regulations shall prevail as determined by city staff. So that actually came straight off the city website of the state statute. That being said, there is no talk of a detention base and anything in their current detention base in Bear Park. Next to the dog park is already silted and it cannot take any more water. We already have drainage issues. More water flow from sheer erosion of the panels isn't, being an impermeable surface will affect flooding issues along the creek. That leads into town, leads into town up behind the grocery store next to F S Gas Station. Wildlife determinant mental anguish, emotional impact, potential aqua fire contamination. PZB and City Council in twenty-three, twenty twenty-three passed future land use plan, which stated the best use for this land is a single-family residential, not a, will this project better our town or bring it down? We need to set a precedent, because if we allow this solar farm, we can't stop any in the future. If we have them on all sides, then how will, we, will town grow? We're going to have, to have void waste area solar farms and housing spread out between them. I have, I have been to thirty different solar field sites, and not one of them is up to our city zoning standards. That would be, that would have to maintain. They're planning a gravel road. However, our current statute for zoning is that it has to be dusty surface, which includes, has to be oil and chip asphalt or concrete. Also, looking at the wear and tear on the whole road. What is their plan for a major disaster, if a major disaster happens, and if they have money insurance set aside? My shop is a hundred fifty feet downhill from this property. I have several thousand pounds of nitrates, along with other chemicals, and if water gets into everything downstream, that would be an EPA cleanup nightmare as well as being expensive. Mary Miller is currently working on a bill to help municipalities to be able to block solar and wind farms. Um, then Steve Schuffler said, Steve Schuffler made the following statement, that he wanted the Planning and Zoning Board to consider, to consider on the information provided and make good informed recommendation to the City Council. State Representative Regan Duran made the following statements. Illinois State Association of Counties has taken up a position, a statement that has proposed some legislation that specifically is in an effort to allow counties to best represent their residents when it comes to entering into agreements for renewable energies, primarily wind and solar. When considering approval or denial of a special, a special use permit for a commercial solar wind energy facility, if the facility is within one and a half miles of municipality's planning boundary, either facility conflicts with the municipality's adaptive comprehensive plan or significant infrastructure investments like roads, water, sewers, or utilities have been made to support anticipated residential or commercial development in the area. Is the property zoned business? Yes. Is the current comprehensive plan that city Monticello, that the city Monticello has adopted for the boundaries in this zoning, it was stated yes. So that's the big question is, would this new proposal conditional use permit for a solar production facility be in line with your comprehensive plan? I strongly urge you to consider not only the residents, but the current businesses there as well. Your emergency response personnel, one of the biggest concerns is a disaster readiness or emergency plan as well as decommissioning. But I do understand those conversations will come subsequently. Want to get a drink?
We're not done.
I'm gonna let you know what the responses to these.
Oh, okay. I got you.
Okay. Okay. Lindsey McIntyre presented a PowerPoint presentation that she had had at the first zoning meeting, show, uh, there were some issues that, to address some of the issues that were brought up at the July twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five PZB meeting. Lindsey McIntyre made the following statements and answered questions. Monticello is an MS four community, which means the city does their own stormwater review. We have to submit a stormwater prevention plan known as a SWIP to the city's stormwater engineer. That shows that we cannot cause greater damage and flow post-construction than currently exists. A separate professional engineer has also approved the application. The review internally within their company, making sure those documents were correct. We authorize, we're authorized through Army Corps Nationwide Permit Number fourteen for using the access road and crossing the riverine. They have personnel that examines the habitat, as well as any federally threatened or endangered species on the property. We have also gone through that diligence, and we have a letter in hand stating approval for the wetlands crossing culvert upgrade, as well as the species. This is a federal level. However, we do, we also did do a state level check that use, through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Illinois Department of Natural Heritage, they have personnel who work at these sites that examine these sites, and we applied for them for review. Their database contains no record of any state-listened threatened or endangered species on or adjacent to the property. Illinois Department of Natural Resources has given us a letter stating no impact to surrounding archaeological or historic sites in that area of Monticello. We do provide a surety bond when applying for the permit to show proof that the bond decommissioning of the site. The glare study shows no impact because there is existing tree line, there's a fence, and by the time the sun hits that portion of the panels, there's no glare going into homes, which has approved by a certified engineer. The glare study does take into account seasonal elements, so it does show a full year. Noise on the solar site has been, has been in question. We have two pads in central parts of the site. Those contain inverter pads that are converting direct current electricity, DC current, to an alternating current to make it usable on the lines. Those are the only components that will have noise. When they, when they're fully operational, really peak production around one P M, they're gonna emit sixty decibels, which is the sound of a household air conditioner running. When you get to the fence line, the sound is. When you get to the fence line, the sound is ambient, meaning you can't hear it not you can't decipher the sound of those inverters from just the surrounding nature sounds. We also, we use native pollinator pollinator friendly seed mix and do trimmings two to three times a year. That is something that the Agricultural Department of Illinois has approved in their AMA agreement. They have stated they do not want us to trim more than that or less than that. Emergency response and fire protection. Part of our construction process is working with local fire department and providing training onsite is fully after the site is fully installed. These systems only producing power during summertime hours, so there's no so if there's ever going to be a situation, it's occurring at the inverter box and there's a way to degeneratize that. That's what the training will entail with the local fire department, and we've informed the fire chief that we are willing and able to do that at construction. In terms of property values, we put together a study for the city council. We can put together a study for the city council to provide them with more information regarding that. This is the property that's located next to the jail in the industrial area. This is not the type of property that the residents would be built on for Suzanne. We are taking down trees to build the access road. They're in the middle, but the perimeter trees will stay. Board member Michael Beam stated the following. All due respect to the gentleman that brought the studies about the property values and stuff. I went through this at county level with the wind farms and every single every study that shows that it says it lowers property values. You can find one that says they don't. There's a lower study that was done October last year that says solar farms actually increase property values by a half to 2%. I don't know which one's right, and I'm not making a determination one way or the other. Then Suzanne Wells made the following statements. She spoke with eleven individual property owners at the Bear Park subdivision and they're in support of her solar facility and signed a petition. With respect to taking quality farm ground farmland out of production, when I bought the property in 99, it was already zoned industrial since 1986 and was planned to be used as industrial park. It was zoned industrial until 2019 when the zoning was changed to a business due to the possibility of selling the property. The majority of the properties in this area are zoned industrial, and I'm asking for the property to revert back to the original zoning of industrial. There was never any indication that this would not be appropriate place for a residential subdivision due to only having one road in and one road out. It is currently being farmed, but that's not its highest and best use. It will be developed in some kind of business capacity. The question is, number one, is it appropriate to zone this industrial? And I believe it is since all the neighbors are industrial. It would be consistent with my business neighbors who also signed the petition saying they support this project. Number two. This is solar appropriate use for the property, and I believe it is. It is the least impactful you can use. You could have industrial over even even business of any kind. It's virtually silent with no lights after construction and no trucks. There are no factories or other businesses in that area that have there are factories and other businesses in that area that have much more traffic, dust, obviously dangerous chemicals and stuff like that. None of that exists on this property. There's been another question about the road going in. That is really part of the permit process and not a zoning issue. Whether the company who is going to run the business on the property has enough insurance, it's not a zoning issue. State law provides a decommissioning cash bond that is reviewed five year that is reviewed every five years is put into place at the point of permitting. I think that's one of the good benefits. The statute it provided framework that's good for the landowners and good for the community. With regard to the permeable structure and solar panels are are on stakes and not building when looking at drainage. There is something that relates. This is something that relates to when you you build a building and you take that whole piece of property out of drainage. This is not permanent buildings, so that permeable language he was talking about doesn't apply. There is a difference between proposed legislation and what is current legislation. Current legislation allows rezoning and the solar facility. The property has always been intended for an industrial park, which is part of the which is part of the comprehensive plan. And board member Sean Spillman asked the following question. In 2019, did you make the sale contingent of being able to rezone the property? So so then when that fell through in 2019, would it have gone back to industrial? Jim Gobarzak stated that it was believed that the conditional use was approved along with the rezoning. However, the company decided against going forward with that project. With regard to the topography, are you keeping the same grade or are you building it up? Lindsey McIntyre stated they're keeping the topography as it is. The only grading will be done on the access road where the two electrical pad and the two electrical pads for the fitters. Remember, Michael Beam stated stated the comment made that approving the solar farm is setting a precedent for everybody to then build a solar farm. Each solar farm is reviewed individually and has to go through the approval process. This isn't breaking new ground to have a solar farm in the size of Monticello. There are numerous cities outside our size or smaller that have them. State Representative Regan Deering stated the following. I wasn't given the indication that you were setting a precedent. I was just referencing the control that has been taken away from the county according to the state legislation and that you're in a unique position being a municipality, you still have authority to do as you please. After discussion, motion was made by Michael Beam, seconded by Chad Johnson to approve the rezoning and conditional use permit allowing the ground son of solar array at the parcel currently zone B business and a property commonly known as 1215 Raymond Road. The motion passed five to one. Granting the rezoning. Now, this is me talking. Granting the rezoning for the city of Monticello ordinance is section 153 dot 079C will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, general welfare of the normal and orderly development or improvement of the surrounding properties. Attached was a copy of the PZB motion, the vicinity map, project exhibit, and the ordinance. It says I gave. So and then the other thing was that we did. We did have another public notice that went out of the Ohio County Journal Republican. Mailings were sent to the adjacent property owners. And we followed all the state statutes on that. And with that, my recommendation is you discuss this ordinance and the following resolution.
That all? Can I answer questions?
Initially, this first one will take it back to the zoning of industrial. Correct. Second one is the actual continual conditional use. Conditional use permit. There's actually two separate issues. Yes. Okay, just want to be clear on that. Yeah, it's one of those things around either tied together. They tie together, but yeah, I mean, you we could pass industrial use and go back to what that was without passing the conditional use. Yes. Just for clarification.
But we couldn't pass the conditional use without passing the
Right.
Estrel.
That's why it's worse. Yep.
Okay. On top of that, has there been any like thought into purchasing that property for like for residential or anything of that nature, or has it just been stagnant?
I don't know, but the applicants here and those are those are questions they're certainly able to answer.
The table and we can take answer some questions if you like. Be happy to answer that.
That's fine. Have to bring it up.
Please, I'm sorry, Suzanne, go ahead and introduce yourselves too. I know for Robin's benefit, we should make sure it gets on the minutes.
That's fine. I'm Suzanne Wells. I'm the president of RNS Unlimited, which is the entity that owns this property in Bear Park.
My name is Lindsey McIntyre. I'm a project developer with Soul Source Power representing the project.
Steve Longham, Senior Project Developer with Soul Source Power, and I'm also a professional civil engineer.
I just if I could, I know that there were some questions Mr. Rogers raised and I would just those weren't addressed before and I would just quickly, as far as the fence around the solar project or possibly the flat panels blocking his view, blocking my view is absolutely not a cause of action in the state of Illinois. If it were, there would be not a single development ever done in the state of Illinois. Most people might be familiar with Chicago Cubs and the rooftop bar owners who sued the Chicago Cubs. They had developed all these rooftops and the Chicago Cubs put huge video boards blocking their view. And the court said there is not and has never been a cause of action in the state of Illinois that says you can't develop the property next to me because of what blocked my view. Secondly, talks about that this is a project that I'm doing you know, for the money, I think is the quote. It is an investment property. We bought the property, my husband and I in 1999. In 1986, Larry McClure and I happen to continue to keep the information gave us a brochure showing us that this was an industrial park and it's dated 1986. So it's been an industrial park for 39 years, the entire thing. It appears as if maybe Rogers or the row property might have been sold right about the same time as the industrial park. Shows, of course, the Rogers part right there and some others. So this has been an industrial park since 1986. You'll see here industrial uses are in orange. Industrial zoning goes basically from this park all south, honestly, probably all the way to Vioben. You see all my neighbors are industrial. All of them are industrial use except for these. There's two and they are actually outside the city limits, but they're not, of course. I did go around. There were 11 business owners and property owners in the business park itself that signed a petition, should be part of your packet that said that we we agree with this use of this property as a solar park. Developing it as a business, it's an investment for me. My my husband is deceased and has been gone for 11 years. But we bought all this property and there are seven buildings out there as a result of us buying this property in 1999. So this property has been developed and it's appropriate and expected that development happens in an industrial park. That's why it was zoned that way for development. This opportunity has come up to develop it as a solar park and it was attractive to me because it's the lowest impact use I can imagine of an industrial zoning. And I can I can still maintain the property. Also mentioned, Soul Source has mentioned that residents can apply for a 10% reduction in their in their electric bill because of the community solar that we're hoping to have. Just doing a very, very basic math problem. Say there are, I think there's actually 5,900 residents in Monticello. If you just say 6,000 makes the math easier for me. 2,000 households. Say the 2,000 households average about 200 a month, which by the way is probably pretty conservative in their electric bill. So they'll save $20. But over 2,000 households, that's $40,000. $40,000 a month will go directly into the pockets of the citizens of Monticello because we have community solar. I don't know what business you can bring into town that directly impacts every every resident, potentially every resident in the in the city. The there was a there was a comment that, you know, I don't know why this is being fast tracked. From our point of view, it doesn't seem like it's been fast tracked because Lindsey will point out to you that there's been 20 studies, 20 different studies, and this is actually part of the 2023 law that went into effect. A lot of people know and Michael Beam from the county that are very well aware of this, been working with this law for a couple of years now. But that law went into effect and it made some very, very stringent, were not required before 23, but now they are 20. Is that correct? 20 different studies.
With just federal and state agencies to review the project, project impacts and have given us no effect letters that we provided to the city.
They have met exceeded every expectation of every organization that has looked at the property. So when it seems like this being fast tracked for us, it's been a long, it's been a lot of different agencies have come to the property, looked at it and certified that this is appropriate. The thing that's most important, I think, to you and to me is that the law provides that the decommissioning bond be paid upfront at the point of permitting. And this is a cash bond. It's not a surety bond. It's cash bonds paid upfront. That's a very important point. So that ensures that the money is there to take the panels off the property when they're no longer in use. That bond is reviewed every five years by state law to make sure that there's enough in there to cover it. So those and as far as residential, there is never, it's just not appropriate. I've got Ring Can as a neighbor down there. They're really heavy industrial use down there. Stop By saw them the other day. I've got gets other trucks, trains, the amount of noise back there is actually pretty high. There's a train track there. There are trucks. There are fires, you know, the fire department. There's lawn mowing. There's two restaurants that have huge fans on top of their buildings as part of their systems over their grills. There's a big, obviously the highway there. There is a lot of noise there. It's an industrial park. We have a body shop is there. That's not a silent business. So there is a lot of noise there. But certainly the noise level that you and that people that have certified it would be a home window air conditioner. That would be probably the least amount of noise that's being made in that neighborhood. But there has been never any question because it's just not appropriate for residential. It's a very poor, and it hasn't been since 1986 intended to be a a business park.
And given that it's open terrain, if you want to say that, it's the perfect spot. In my opinion.
Okay, out of curiosity, these are set in concrete, yes?
No.
No. Nope.
Tell me how these how we stabilize these.
Steve, you want to?
Just out of curiosity, I just want to learn.
There's two ways. Either driven piles, like an H pile that they would drive into the ground or just a screw that you would take a machine. It's just a giant screw. They're usually like eight feet long and they just turn it into the ground.
So it's an eight foot long screw.
Or an
A 20 foot apparatus.
It's not, but they're spaced out.
Right.
Right.
Understand, but each unit, there's a 20 foot panel or a 20 foot up and then a panel on top of that. Here's why I ask. I've been to Maroa. I've been by Maroa and they've had they had a horrible tornado and lost a lot of panels. And that's rough because that means you have to replace that. Two, but the other thing is nobody's done done anything for it. It's been months. So I guess my question would be, what's the plan? Because we live in Illinois and there are tornadoes and we've had in this area, straight line winds. But I believe me, I know Ray and Susan well. They helped us help our church get the property we're on. And let me tell you, that property out there has got straight line winds and until we got a steel roof, we've lost roofs. So I'm like, there's going to be there's going to be potential damage. Is there a plan? I understand there's a plan for the renovation of the property. Is there a plan for that?
Yeah, so this is a tracker system. So it's tracking the sun on a single axis. It's not 20 feet in height. It's about 12. There is a wind gauge throughout the system. So when wind picks up, it does flatten itself out. It's not going to be like a sail. It's flattening itself up. I'm not familiar with the site in Maroa, but
You should drive by.
If it's tilted, that could have been a sail, right? That's catching the wind.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know that whole apparatus, but I do know when I when I saw it, it it, it was messed up. And it's not as big as yours.
In our site, it is, we're fully insured, so insurance can cover any situation such as that. We're, the project itself, it's a community solar project, so we're selling the energy back to the utility grid and that's crediting residential ratepayers. So it behooves us to get these sites up and running and have them producing for as long as possible. If there is a situation where we've got a couple panels that are out, we're monitoring this, we want to get that back running as quickly as possible because this is an energy generation facility.
Yeah.
And with energy rates going up, again, it behooves us to get this up and running quickly.
And I hear you and I understand what you're saying, but what I'm seeing, and like I say, you drive by Maroa one time, they're way in town, they're a closer town than I would, I would want it to be. Okay, and then how long, what is the time, what is the lifespan of this solar farm?
25 years.
25 years, so in 25 years, it goes back?
Yeah.
Okay, but there's no concrete board, there's going to be gravel roads?
There is concrete on the inverter pads, that's the only concrete on the site, yeah.
All right, how deep are those pads?
12 inches, maybe.
12 inches, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're heavy pieces of equipment that have to sit on, and it's probably going to be an area that's squared off like this table, people ask about how big it would be.
But I'm just, I'm doing the math and kind of thinking about what you would have to clear out. There's, when you talk to wind farms, wind farms have 20 to 40-foot deep concrete and they don't take that out. So I'm like, I want to make sure that we're looking at that. When this goes back to industrial, or whatever it's going to end up being, it's fine, okay. Thank you for that.
I have a question. So you're doing this as a benefit to the citizens, what's the guarantee that the citizens of the community are going to save money through your solar farm?
They have to opt in, so we'll be sending mailers out to the locality, but we can't force local ratepayers to sign up for the system. Yeah, they have to opt in, but yeah, there is a guarantee of a 10% discount.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-65, an ordinance amending the zoning map on 1215 Raymond Road, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion before we vote? Hearing or seeing, I may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2025-66, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a ground-mounted solar array at 1215 Raymond Road, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim?
Okay, I'm just going to read through that page again really fast.
All of them?
And this is the day that
I'll have you arrested.
This is basically the second piece of this request from the petitioner here. Resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow ground-mounted solar array at 1215 Raymond Road in the City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. The applicant, the owner and the applicant, sell Monticello solar seeking a conditional use permit, allowing ground-mounted solar array on a parcel currently zoned industrial at 1215 Raymond Road. The City of Monticello court ordinance is section 153.017A, a lot of such a structure wants conditional use permit is issued. Granted a conditional use permit will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare of the normal and forward development and improvement of surrounding areas. Vicinity mat, area of the property, copy of the public notice and PCC motion will include in your general packet. Again, the public hearing was held on Monday, September 15, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. The board reviewed the documents associated with the project, that's one of the public net, and in a vote of five to one, recommended approving the conditional use permit. Recommend the city council discuss the conditional use permit with or without conditions for the allowing a ground-mounted solar array at 1215 Raymond Road, Piatt County, Illinois, at the regular scheduled meeting today.
Any comments or questions of Jim?
You will work with them on terms of drainage and, I mean, I know that's a concern out by the middle school and pregame and the
That's a good question, Mike. So the use is different than the design. The design comes later and then we get into nuts and bolts about, they have to still meet all of our requirements laid out in, you know, in our code ordinances, but in our design manual. And then I'll work with their engineer, just like we do on any other development, like, okay, you're going to allow this now, here's usually a subdivision, we get a lot of that done upfront, but it is, it all has to be adhered to. All the building codes, electric codes, site plan, all that will be approved and viewed and make sure that it's consistent with what we expect.
Along with EMS training?
Yes, and that's something that they're already committed to providing that to our fire department and probably whoever would want it, that would, is part of our local responding, like Mid-Piatt and Monticello Fire.
Any others? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-66, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a ground-mounted solar array at 1215 Raymond Road, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of city staff? Hearing or seeing, none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
No.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 2025-67, an ordinance prohibiting the sale of the THC products, kratom, novel psychoactive and synthetic drugs. This goes to Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This council, police department response to calls for service and medical incidents involving individuals that abuse narcotics. THC products, kratom, and novel psychoactive and synthetic drugs pose a public health concern. These drugs have not been evaluated or approved by the Food and Drug Administration for use in any circumstance. Some of these items have been marketed towards youth. By packaging resembling commonly purchased candy, individuals have been known to mix kratom with other drugs or medications, causing them to suffer dangerous and sometimes fatal effects. By counting mental health reports, several individuals have been treated for abusing these items locally. These items are currently being sold in two gas stations/convenience stores in Monticello. We are working with the Piatt County Mental Health Center and Piatt County Board to restrict the sale of these items of the city and county. It is recommended that city council discuss and approve ordinance 2025-67 prohibiting the sale of THC products, kratom, and novel psychoactive and synthetic drugs.
Any questions or comments for Rob?
I have a question. So how, listening to everyone's stories, how do you differentiate the kratom leaf versus the other synthetic substances? Because, I mean, I understand, you know, that they're probably selling the synthetic version here, but what I hate is that they're all lumped together and that there are people that have legitimate medical issues who, you know, the life-saving stories they talked about, how do you separate that?
So I'll go to, did everyone get the board packet from the FDA by 29th, 2025? I'll go, it's page three, halfway down. How's the FDA protecting the public from the risk of kratom? There's no FDA-approved kratom drug products or over-the-counter drugs containing kratom or its ingredients, metrogynine or 7OH metrogynine that are legally on the market in the U.S. The FDA continues to warn consumers not to use kratom because of the risk of serious adverse effects, including liver toxicity, seizures, and substance use disorder. That's what I go off of. I can agree. Just like Jim and Suzanne mentioned, for every one study you see, for one side of the argument, we are seeing another side. I just did a Google search while everyone was speaking. I found something through the addiction centers called veteransaddiction.org that went and said kratom is bad, it's known as a, they call it a substance use disorder. If you feel like you're being addicted to kratom, please reach out. And I get that. Again, there's going to be arguments on both sides. I go to the FDA and kind of go with their verbiage on it. Not that I and our illustrious governor have a lot in common, the governor's even looking at some of this, looking at an executive order that was just put in the Chicago Tribune five days ago. And if Governor Pritzker's looking at doing something along those lines, you know, maybe it's something we need to look at. And I'll be honest, when the director of the Mental Health Center came to me and said, hey, you know, this is getting to be an issue, I trust, Tony, we've seen that in the community, I've seen that at my previous job. You will see people abuse these products and then we have to deal with the after effects Maybe you want to
I don't discount the claims that have been made from the individuals who have been touched by the powder or the pure leaf, so I don't want to take away from their testimonies or report. I will tell you what's being sold in your community right now is not leaf, it's not copper, it's only synthesized. I look at it this way, to what Officer Ross just said, the governor's looking at the cannabinoid thing, so we're talking about two totally different things. You're not removing access from the community, they can still go to a local municipality that does such a broad restriction on that. There's this thing called Amazon that they can still completely utilize. I just think that what I am saying as a Monticello resident is you are saying synthesized kratom being sold, being abused, people are going through some really serious overdoses for that. So for that reason, that's why I brought this to the attention of Officer Ross, to this council, is because I don't want to wait for a fatality to happen before we take action. I think that's why leaders are called, is to look at a much higher elevation, how they can protect their consumers, their constituents. So, yeah, I go with the data and I will just tell you, to my knowledge, you don't have pure leaf or powder being sold.
But this ban would cover it? I'm just a little bit worried about kind of the legal ambiguity of having this thing cover all these things. And we say like, oh, we don't, it's not being sold here, like the natural leaf part, that we're only seeing the synthesized, but what you're talking about doesn't differentiate. So it would cover also the
If you look at the third whereas down on the ordinance, it says Delta 8. I can't even say that word there at all. It's specific to the synthetic, it's already spoken in that third paragraph down that it's
Okay, I just saw, I guess, kratom.
Right. But if you go in, if you go in and actually look at the ordinance, the third section down.
Okay, that's considering.
Correct me.
As it clears on the thinking?
If you read further down, it actually calls out kratom and then points you to the Kratom Control Act and how kratom is defined there, and I think it encompasses everything. So it's the opposite of what you're saying. It's not, it's not defined that way.
And then, so who wrote this?
Our city attorney did, and then we got a copy of it, I believe, from the City of, you have, again, I'm just factual, so the City of El, the City of Elrod, the City of Perrin, the City of Jerseyville, the City of Marion, the City of Orland Park, and the City of Troy, and now the City of Kankakee have all passed the ordinance, very similar to what you're looking at, and those are full bans. Again, it doesn't mean that you have to follow them, all I'm just educating is that wouldn't be setting any precedent to the state of Illinois, because there's always communities that have went both ways, what you're looking at now and, you know, maybe some people that
Yeah, this is a first step of numbing overdose, I want to say it that way.
If we're worried about the pure leaf?
Yeah.
They can still get that, you know, this is
Oh, but they wouldn't be able to get it in the
They could, they could
I'm out of salt.
Within city corporate limits.
Right. And I just keep scrolling down this whole thing and it's all novel, synthetic. I hear what you're saying, was it says kraton and
Yeah, as defined in section 5A of the Illinois Kratom Control Act, which if you
Which
Look up that act, it defines everything.
And doesn't it, the
That's cool, you don't have to.
I dove into it while everyone was talking, I wanted to make sure it was covered, but total paradigm shift when you say you can buy this stuff online. I mean, if people need it, we're not, it's
Isn't that crazy?
Sold currently, we're not taking it away from anybody that's currently getting it locally, they can get it elsewhere.
Couldn't pass an ordinance too, if you wanted to allow the pure leaf back in, you could just pass it to, do another ordinance to allow that if you wanted to.
We're pretty good at passing ordinances.
Yes.
How feasible is it to enforce that at our level, to go in there and delineate between this is it, this isn't it? Is that manageable?
So obviously, the first step in this, and this is, and I got you, we go in tomorrow and, you know, take our thing off, you know? We would send a letter saying, hey, this is our ordinance, this is what we passed, you have 30 days, I think, would be arreasable. I'd have no problem with that. After 30 days, if we see it, then that's something to where, okay, you know, we look at the ingredients, you know, see how that fits in our ordinance, how it sits with federal state law, and then go from there. If that means we have to take it out to go testing, then we take it out to testing.
I have a question for you. So let's say one were a resident of another community that's not Monticello, had the kratom, let's say the kratom leaked, and they were pulled over within Monticello city limits, would they be charged with having that? Because it's, is it just banned purchasing of it here? It's not possession.
Purchase, sort of like the old adage about cigarettes, it was illegal to sell them to minors, but it wasn't illegal for minors. And that was something that they passed back in, you know, the 70s and they continued on. So this is, and obviously things have changed, this is purely for the sale.
Can I ask a question?
Not the possession or anything.
I'd like to ask a question, sir. First off, thank you for your service and all the wonderful things you're doing. Where typically are natural whole leaf?
Typically what's is with the introduction of the novelty products, 7OH products, a lot of consumers, they, that's what drives the market, that's what they're bound for. You're right, it's got to be hard to find a bag of the leaf products, mobile leaf, but now, the purists, we're purists, we're buying them all online, they're in bigger cities, they have a store that sells, you know, quality GND products, but small communities, what the big, the really big issue, you know, everybody here knows my point, you're reacting to misinformation by law.
So I guess my question is, are you buying the pure leaf at gas stations or general stores?
Too, before the other products came and pushed about in the marketplace. So, but nowadays, both folks, they know a store that sells, they consume, or they get them all online, that's a big hit, that's a big word, you know, that's an article in the conversation we call, you know, we have, you know, you really want your citizen to have a right to possess the consumer product, it's helpful, so you know my point there. And the community in this island, like I said, the big issue is freedom of liberties are at risk, and it's a ripple dollar effect across the state, and I wish you all would have reacted to the real information, not so much the fake information or the bad information. But you're making healthy decisions, and a great conversation, I'm really pleased, I drove a 12-hour runway to listen to you all and ask whether you're the truth. There's a lot of ways of going when I discuss it, because they've already made mine up without getting educated, but it'd be nice if you had somewhere in town, somebody could buy a whole product used, you know, but if people needed But when people need it, they know about it, they'll get it elsewhere. Thank you so much for asking me the question.
My only comment on this is that there's obviously an effort from the kratom people, but none of them live here. The only person that lived here that spoke, spoke in favor of this ordinance, as did our police chief, as did our mental health director. So I would have hoped that if there was really a need of people in the city for this, have it here, that they would have come tonight to speak. And there was nobody that I know of that spoke in favor of the natural kratom that lived here. Appreciate the information, but they don't represent us.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-67, an ordinance prohibiting the sale of THC products, kratom, novel psychoactive and synthetic drugs?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more comments, questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
No.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the report from the Fire, Police, City Administration, feasibility committee discussion only. I think that's Kelly Jones.
Thank you, Mayor.
This might be the best thing you hear.
Yeah.
Then again.
All right, so, I didn't pass my bedtime, unfortunately, pretty well, I talk fast. So again, thank you for the opportunity to gather the information for the future operations of the admin, police, and fire departments. We have met eight times, they selected since May until actually through tonight, and to date, the following items were discussed: evaluation of current space and limitations, current and future needs of all three departments. We met and received a conceptual design for Part IV of the three options moving forward, as well as a study of five response times based on site location, that's obviously a big deal. Reviewed, discussed, and selected the best option out of those three, the future of the three departments, and then also looked into financing options for how we're going to fund this if the council chooses to move forward. All three departments were in favor of, or are in favor of, a remodel of the interior of the city administration building. That means because we don't have to purchase any buildings or any space, we're confined within those walls. If you guys have been over there, we are pretty much on top of each other. As much as I love the wood paneling, it would be kind of nice to, you know...
Have a window.
Right? And also, in addition to that, the committee is supportive of a new police and fire station on the existing site. We pursue the idea of an addition of the existing, excuse me, a remodel of the existing site and then an addition on. Just given the limitations of that building, it's kind of a uniquely shaped building, it has a lot of limitations as it relates to any expansion, so we're pretty confined by that. So they are interested in the idea of just a completely new building on that site. So based upon that idea, the cost opinion that we received in conceptual design from Farnsworth, it was a beautiful project, but not something that we were feeling was fiscally responsible of taxpayer dollars, and certainly not something we would be comfortable putting before you guys. So we did a little extra digging on our own, looked at some comparable models of, within the last two year, fire, two years, fire stations that have been built, either an addition or complete ground-up or new build in central Illinois. So we'd kind of like to get a better ballpark, if there's something that could suit the needs of all the departments, but still be something that is a little more palatable financially-wise. And then also, looking at those projects with the other districts and the departments, the committee is comparable that utilizing a specific building type, like a post-rank type building, would allow for a more financially efficient project. Unfortunately, without a design plans or bid-ready documents, a contractor builder is just not going to give a cost opinion or an estimate. We'd like someone to say, yeah, you're close, or not really, but without having the plans that show the nuts and the bolts of what's involved, nobody's going to do that. Therefore, the recommendation of the committee is that the council consider adding funding of $56,000 in the fiscal year 26 budget for 50% schematic design and cost opinion. If the council wanted to pursue bid-ready documents, and we talked about this this evening, I don't think we're there yet, that would be an additional $330,000. So that's the next step, but we're not there yet, like I said. This would allow for a more accurate idea of what funding the city would need to commit to if the council chose to go in that direction. Do you have any questions? If Russ is here, Terry and I are both here, of course, the two aldermen that were present.
If, Farnsworth, right? Their build budget, if you want to say, their budget, how much would that benefit the community if we went with that quote?
If you went with that quote, that was a pretty fantastic design.
Okay.
And our, they didn't do anything they weren't supposed to do. We said, these are our needs, find us something either this side, that side, combined with this department or by yourself, and tell us what it can look like and give us a cost opinion idea, right? Engineer opinion's different than builder opinion. That being said, it was a pretty grandiose plan. So that's why we want to take it back, saying, we're thinking more in this range, can you find us something or build us something kind of closer to that? We've done that with Oberheim Park, we've done it with a few other projects in town, too.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
It's only me?
Nobody else is going to have.
So are you looking for foundation? No, the council, this is just discussion.
So the recommendation, I see that, and then if the council's interested in doing it, it'll be...
And this is a complete tear-down rebuild?
This is for plans to do so, yes, of the police and fire only.
Yeah, yeah.
And then remodel of the city admin.
Okay, okay.
So the committee will be asking, or asked me and others that do the budget, to ask city council for $56,000 in expenditure for the schematic design and cost opinion for a less grandiose station.
Okay.
And that's...
This is very nice, okay?
Yeah, it's not, it's not, you know...
Right. But it's... Going to pull the money from type thing.
Well, we'll talk about that later, that's not something that...
Before we get to that...
$56,000 will be built into next year's budget, it won't be coming from anywhere.
Good.
We just, before you take the next step, whether it's to get the bid-ready documents or to ask the council, or whatever direction you take to get the funding for the actual project, you're still going to need to know what you're fundraising for, what that is for, since it's the first step. And I will say, both the police and fire have been incredibly generous in making concessions in their plans for shared spaces and so forth.
I certainly appreciate the efforts of the committee. You put a lot of time in on it, and I appreciate what you've done. I think it's, it'll pay off in the long run, I think. We've got good consensus, I think, from the group, so that's all you can ask for. So I'm very proud of that. Okay? Are we ready to go on? Do you have 100 more questions to ask, Kelly? Because you know Andrea doesn't function after nine o'clock, and we're getting real...
Amen, you got two minutes.
Eight, I'm sorry.
She has one I O. So it's her good results.
Alder person's reports, Andrea?
Uh, no, I have one minute to nine, and the brains are shut down, so...
Cole?
No, sir.
Brian?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Billy? Tom?
Nothing.
Eli?
I just, oh, sorry, I appreciate the police chief and what they do in terms of, and the mental health center about dealing with, you know, with all that stuff. I mean, it's a really hard, hard thing to do, and you're dealing with a lot of people's emotions, they're very variable. And so I just want to say I really appreciate it. I'm a nurse.
I actually want to congratulate A and R, they've actually been doing really good work on Main Street. I hate to see that the brick's going to go bye-bye again, but they've done really good work, and they've been very polite, and they've actually fixed things that have been incorrect. So, very good company.
I'll pass that along. Mike?
I don't know about you, but I've heard a earful of people opposed to the speed limit stuff. There are a couple concerns that I have, maybe clarifications. Number one, the 30 mile an hour speed limit did go into effect on Bridge Road, and that was done without city council approval, as far as I, well, we only voted on this, the speed limit for Bridge Street, and yet there's a 30 mile an hour sign by pre-game that was not approved by the city council. I don't know how that happened.
So we amended the schedule for Bridge Street for speeds other than 30 miles an hour. That schedule's specific to speeds other than 30 miles an hour, okay?
Right.
They have to digest that first. So when we annexed property, the roadway into the city limits earlier this year, jurisdictional transfer.
Right.
The roadway, it's 30 miles an hour, and unless we make it some...
No, but I specifically asked the question about, does this have anything to do with the speed limit? And they said, no. So, I mean, that's something that I think before it happened, the city council should have voted just out of good conscience, because we discussed all of that, and there was never a vote that said, we're going to do that. So I was disappointed to see that up there without having the city council vote. That's all. Maybe legally you can do it, but I think the fact that we discussed it and that was up there without us voting, I was disappointed in that. The second thing, and I've had a couple people that have noted this, is the golf cart, no golf cart sign is down on Bridge Street, and I would like to have seen that stay up at least until council decides what they want to do. They have golf carts or no golf carts. I realize it's 35 miles an hour, so technically they can do it, but I, we...
There are signs that say you can't...
Sign's moved, it's not down.
Oh, it moved, okay.
Yeah. There are signs that say you can't have golf carts beyond...
Okay. I went by there and where it was...
It's not where it was, it's farther out.
I'll rescind that part of it, but...
Can I piggyback on to what Mike said real quick about Monticello Road? On the way towards Champaign, I've had compliments, though three criticisms I have are the ones coming into town, because it goes 55 and then 30. On the way out of town, it goes 35, then 40 by pre-game, and then 55, where that feels like that's a much smoother transition, whereas the one into town, the complaints I had was, why is there no differentiation like there is on the way out of town?
But there actually is.
It's 55 and then...
55, there is a 40. There's a, if you, trust me, as somebody who drives the roads on Baytown all the time, it goes 55, there is a 45.
You're talking driving on Monticello?
Coming into Monticello, yes.
From 45 to 30.
I didn't see that, and I drove out twice yesterday.
No.
Do you know if there's a, because we looked and we saw 55, and then there's 30 with the flag, and then you guys had the police trailer last Friday there, and I didn't see 40 anything.
I don't know if 40 is there, but keep in mind, we can only dictate what's ours.
Right.
So I think there's some discussion that we're having with the county to have that, for lack of a better term, buffer, sweep, something, whatever you want.
Right, okay.
Because like you said, that is correct. Outside of city limits, it's for, you know, they're at the edge of the pre-game.
Yeah.
And then X amount of, you know, 250 feet, whatever that is, goes up to 55. So that would be up to the county to sweep that in. And we are, not for lack of watch or anything else, we do have a reduced speed limit ahead of Diamond Side, yellow, right, will be posted whenever it's in.
Gotcha. I do think we need to discuss sooner rather than later the golf cart, because there is a common thread out there that it was done so that we can allow golf carts, and I think we said that that's a separate issue, so at some point, I think we need to decide on that.
You're talking about Bridge Street?
About Bridge Street on the golf carts.
Yeah, we talked about that, what meeting was it, two ago, that we, they wouldn't be allowed?
We talked about it as something that could potentially be allowed or not allowed. And I believe the last consensus was, we're going to see how it works, and if it presents a danger or an issue, then yes, we can rescind the golf cart across the bridge.
So the sign is still there?
The sign is at around 47, heading west.
Coming in, but not going?
No, going out.
Going out.
Going out, okay.
Correct. Because you can't have, you can have it moved.
It must have got moved.
Yes.
It did.
Because I just went, because somebody wrote to me about it, and I'm like, well, I'm going to go out and verify, like, oh, that sign's not there, but I didn't go further.
It's past the bridge.
Are we done now? Thank you. Police chief's report.
I think that can't wait for three weeks.
Okay, very good. Assistant administrator?
It's only two.
Ditto.
Oh, was it three? It is three.
Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Andrea? See you whenever.